Good day is the Lamb. You are welcome to this first day of the new month, and the second day of the institute section of the 27th Annual Synod. Of course, today's Bible study exercise. And we pray that as we have come to learn from God, the divine interpreter will speak to us in Jesus' name. So arise as we take our hymn, Synod Agenda, hymn number 35, on page 111. The Lord be with you. Please sit as we pray. Immortal, invisible, God the Holy Wise, we are glad to be in your centenary today's morning, the very first day of the month. We appreciate you for the privilege given to see the commencement of this new month. Jehovah God, we thank you since we started the 27th Annual Synod, you being our side. Thank you for this uncommon grace bestowed on us as members of this year's synod, especially your servant, His Grace, the most venerable Reverend Adelie and the late president. Thank you since the commencement of this synod. There's no record of casualty, neither we have any record of accidents. Today, our hearts are full of gratitude, our mouths are full of praises because of your loving guidance. Thank you for this beautiful morning, the day we gather together as delegates to this synod to study you through the instruction of the Holy Spirit. Father, as our thanks and praises in the mighty name of Jesus, we acknowledge our sins for nature. I believe in you that if we say we have no sin, we deceive ourselves. Therefore gracious and merciful Father, have mercy upon all this morning in the mighty name of Jesus. We commit today's Bible study exercise unto you. There's nothing we can do carnally, but we believe through you and you we would to do more than expectation. Right from the start of this study, even to the end. Holy Spirit divine, come and have your way. Take preeminence, prepare our hearts to receive you. We pray at the hand of it all, let your name alone be glorified. Blessing, testimony, and joy, the hymn be our portion. This one makes we ask, truth, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. The family's prayer. The only passage for this Bible study is taken from the Gospel of Jesus according to St. Matthew. Chapter 26, we commence the reading from verse 30 through 41. Matthew, chapter 26, verses 30 to 41. "And as they were eating, Jesus took bread and blessed it and breaked it and gave it to the disciples and said, 'Take, eat; this is my body.' And he took the car and gave thanks and gave it to them, saying, 'Drink ye all of it; for this is my blood, the New Testament, which is sure for many for the remissions of sins. But I say it unto you: I will not drink any force of this fruit or device until that day when I drink the new with you in my Father's kingdom.' And when it had sung a hymn, they went out to the mount of Olives. Then Jesus said unto them, 'Oh, ye shall be offended because of me in this night; for it is written, our smite is separate, and the sheep of the flock shall be scattered abroad. But after it hath risen again, I will go before you into Garnellin.' Peter had answered and said unto him, 'Though all men shall be offended because of thee, yet will I never be offended.' Jesus said unto him, 'Verily, I say unto thee, that this night, before the cock-roe, thou shalt deny me thrice.' Peter said unto him, 'Though I should die with thee, yet will I not deny thee.' Likewise also said, 'O'er the disciples.' Then commenced Jesus with them unto a place called Jezemah, and he said unto the disciples, 'Sit ye here; while I go I pray yonder.' And he took with him Peter and the two sons of Zebedee, and began to be sorrowful and very heavy. Then he said unto them, 'My soul is exceedingly sorrowful even unto that. Tarry ye there and watch with me.' And they went a little farther, and they fell on his face; he praised him, 'O my Father, if it is possible, let this car pass from me; nevertheless, not as I will, but as thou will.' And he commenced unto the disciples, and foundeth them asleep, and said unto Peter, 'What, what, could you not watch with me one hour? Watch and pray, that ye enter not into temptation; the Spirit is desolate, but the flesh is weak.' This is the word of the Lord." We take the hymn 488, 488, in our Synod Agenda. 488. It's on page 100. Page 100, paragraph 15. Please be seated. Let us bow our heads as we pray. Eternal God, divine interpreter, you are the only one that wrote, you are the only one that take it, and you are the only one that can interpret. So Father Lord, we pray that you come into our midst and interpret your word into our lives so that we may follow you divinely. In Jesus mighty name we pray. Good day is the Lamb. I want to bless the name of the living God that here again, we are alive this morning, and this is the third day of the synod. And this is a day that we have gathered together. So we give Jesus Christ all praise, all honor, and adoration for being alive today. I want to thank His Grace also for the opportunity to lead this Bible study. And we want to thank all my colleagues and all of us who are gathered today to study the Word of God. Because of time, we will make it very quickly, and then it's an interactive session. I'm just the anchor here. I'm just the person who will be listening and calling each one of us as we go through this word. Let me first of all put one or two things in place so that we can understand the premise from where we are coming from. The Word of God has only one author, and that author is the Holy Spirit. Though there are more than 66 books in the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation, it is God who has written this. So God is the final authority on this word. But each one of us, especially those who have been called, have been exposed to one or two meanings as God will want us to see, depending on what he wants to achieve at any given time. So nobody can claim to be the final authority in the Word of the Bible, though God gives each one of us meanings and interpretation at any given time. So what we are going to do today is that we are all going to look at this topic from a different perspective, and then we will now come to what the Holy Spirit wants to use, especially why he is asking the Church of God to look and watch and pray. Secondly, we want to say to ourselves that it's an interactive issue. We'll just take one or two minutes to make our points or to bring an alternative view. If there's an alternative view of what we are saying or you feel inspired that there's something that the Spirit is telling you about what we are discussing, and then you can then bring it up. Apart from that, we will all just sit down and learn. I'm equally going to learn as we all go through this study. Now let us go to the topic, watch and pray. Watch and pray is our watchword for this year in Methodist Church. And of course, we've read the text, so we'll not go through it again. But let me go through the introduction. Before I get to the introduction, let me say because we are almost, we are all ministers, most of us are ministers or people of God here. I've always felt that one of the best instruments that the Church of God can develop discipleship is through the Bible study. When a preacher mounts the pulpit, he speaks as the Spirit directs him to. And nobody can probably counter him while he's on the pulpit. But during the Bible study, if I come and tell you that Jeremiah is the father of Jesus, in that Bible study, we can establish the Word of God and probably remove all kinds of ambiguity. So that is why Bible study is always a very good one, which we should encourage in our churches because it gives us an in-depth study of the Word by both those who know and those who are learning so that we will not be misled at any given time. So let me just take the introduction. I want us to open to the last page of our Synod Agenda, the last page of our Synod Agenda, and we can read together the introduction. It says, "Take it; take ye it; watch and pray." And that is in Mark, the text in that is Mark 13:33, where the words of our Savior spoken in reference to the time of the end times and his second coming to take his faithful children home. First, we are to watch lest we speak hastily, fretfully, and impatiently. We are to watch lest pride find a place in our hearts. We are to watch lest evil passions should overcome us instead of us subduing them. We are to watch lest a careless indifferent spirit comes upon us and we neglect our duties and become light and trifling and our influences servile of death rather than of life. Secondly, we are to pray. Jesus will not have enjoined this upon us unless there was actual necessity for it. It is well known to him that of yourself you cannot overcome the many temptations of the enemy and the many snares laid for your feet. He has not left you alone to do this, but has provided a way that you can obtain help. Therefore, he has bid you to pray. Now, that is the introduction that has been given to us. But let me add one or two things. Going through this study, watch and pray. One thing I've noticed, which I want to bring to your attention, is that when we are asked to watch, there are two scenarios here, two probable situations. Either you are facing trouble or you are facing expectations. You are to watch either you are facing trouble or you are facing expectations. And the first example I will give of facing expectations, facing expectation was what the writer of this said in Mark that we should watch so that when the time of Jesus is coming, right, we should watch. That is when we are having expectations. And you will find that in Jesus' parable of the ten virgins. Though it is not included here, but I will want you to note Matthew 25:1-12. And that is the story of the ten virgins. So they were supposed to wash. And that is Jesus is telling us that we must watch. That is when we are expecting something. Then when there is the facing trouble, that is when Jesus Christ was going to the cross of Calvary. He instructed his disciples to watch for him. And so those two distinctions are made. So when we are making our contributions, we can add or we can stay on these two distinctions. But these are the two things that were inspired to me, that you are either expecting something or you are facing a trouble. So let us go to the first. There are two microphones beside His Grace and, yes, and our ladyship here so that we can then take each. When you want to come, just raise up your hand and then pick up the microphone and then make a contribution. And for those who are reading the Bible, please, if you have opened to that place quickly or maybe we can just have one reader, just one reader, who will probably take those things for us just to make it very quickly. Can we have somebody who will, yes? Okay, that one person can take the mic so that once we call the... There's a mic here, please pick it up. So once we call the passage, you can equally pick it up quickly and then you can read. So let us go to the very first question. And how does this come to you? In line with the following Bible passages, what does it mean to watch? I have given you two circumstances, but the first question is in line with the following passages. What does it mean to watch? Can we take Luke 21, verse 34 first? Luke 21, verse 34. And then some, okay, since we are having only one person, you have to be quick. Luke, so read loudly for everybody.
Luke 21:34 says, "And take heed to yourselves, lest at any time your heart be overcharged with selfishness and drunkenness and cares of this life, and so that that day come upon you unaware."
Yeah, please put that last part of it, so that what?
So that that day will not come upon you unaware.
Aha, so that that day will not come upon you unaware. If you are to categorize it, that particular passage is talking about what part of the watch are we looking at now? Sir? Expectations or...? Expectations, okay, right. Then let us look at 1 Thessalonians 5:6.
1 Thessalonians 5 says, "Therefore, therefore let us not sleep as do others, but let us watch and be sober."
Yes, so that, well, that one is a... Yes, so that, well, that one is a very difficult one to place eye in that these two situations, right? Paul was writing in there and he said, "Do not let us sleep." Whether it is either situation one or situation two, right? What are we enjoined not to do? Hello? Are we not enjoined to do something? We are not enjoined to sleep. Can we read Romans 13? Then we can now discuss what we are.
Romans 13:11 says, "And that, knowing the time, that now it is high time to awake out of sleep; for now is our salvation nearer than when we believed."
Okay, what part of the division are we talking about in that particular passage? Can you read it again, maybe?
"Now that, knowing the time, that now it is high time to awake out of sleep; for now is our salvation nearer than when we believed."
So which part of the two divisions are we looking at here? Expectations, thank you very much. So most of the time, you see that we, you can sit down, man. You see that majorly, we are dealing with expectations here now, right? Somebody seems to, is there somebody, a hand there? If you just, just stand up and pick up the microphone. Now, the question is, what's in line with the following Bible passages? Can somebody explain to us? Maybe if you have a very, um, let's put it this way. If you have a kind of exigencies or a kind of real-life story of how you can watch while you are expecting or how you can watch while you are in trouble, so that we can then look at what adds to a Christian. Because Christianity is about real-life stories. So sometimes when we do Bible studies, we read it as if it's the story of another people. But those people are telling us these things so that we also can put it in our life. So is anybody going to look at it from a Christian perspective if he has an experience about these two situations? Anybody? Hello? We have divided it into two, expectations and in trouble. As a Christian, right? We have these Bible passages to set us in that place. And we've seen that Paul had written severally about expecting, right? So what about, so what, what kind of experiences? How can we establish these questions now, right? With our experience? Is anybody coming up? Okay, the late president, okay?
What is the law?
Hallelujah.
Well, I see the two aspects of watching, expectations and trouble time, as things that would normally come to any Christian. At any particular time, we may be in trouble. We may also be anticipating trouble. That is a regular thing that will come and go. But the aspect of expectation, I see that one, excuse me, in the life of a Christian, as something that we must continuously be guiding against. And I think the greatest expectation is that of the second coming of our Lord Jesus Christ. As we have been warned, that that second coming will come, will be like a thief coming in the night. Nobody knows. Himself said that even angels in heaven, they don't know. It's only his Father who is privy to that secret, although there are signs he has given to us. So I think, in my personal opinion, that the issue of expecting a second coming, which Paul dwelt on so, in so many places, especially telling us how it's going to happen, and how those that are dead in Christ will first wake up, and those that are still living and alive will now join these ones and they will move up. All these are signs, the expectations that we are expecting. But when we are really looking at the aspect of trouble, when we are in trouble expecting trouble, that one to me is constant. We are in the synod now. It's a lot of responsibility for all officers, especially His Grace. He must have been watching and praying about this and everybody concerned. That may go, another cause for, uh, the need to troubleshoot will even arrive. So I see it in my personal, lay-personal idea that the two aspects of why we are in trouble or why we are expecting to keep on watching is very, very important to a Christian. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, before I go on with others, let me just give you two likely scenarios here that is out of the Bible particularly, and then you can now use it to transpose into what is happening in the Bible. Let us first of all, look at expectations and how, if you do not watch, you can be led astray. You see, the issue here is not just watching. The issue is that you do not go into sin. And that is what Jesus Christ is bringing out here. In terms of expectations, let me put myself, let's put it this way, that you have been a very hard worker. You are somebody who has been diligent in the work you are doing. And so they now expect that they are going to do a promotion and you are going to be promoted, or you assume that they are going to do a promotion in that department. So your expectation is that because we have been working hard, that that promotion should be yours. So it is not as if it is bad to expect that promotion. But then, there is a thin line between your expectations when you have that thing. Now let us assume that instead of that promotion being done in May, the management decides that they are not going to do it in May. They are going to push it forward and they are not telling anybody. And suddenly, you expect that you should, you'll be promoted and then by the time it's August or it's June or something there about, nothing has been told to any of the staff. Suddenly, you see some other people who has not as diligent as you being given some of the responsibilities you expect for that prom, for that position. If you are not careful, the tendency for you is you start sliding down, sliding down. And that is where a Christian is different. Because if you start sliding down, thinking that it is in your strength or in your power and that you must get that promotion. So assuming you are not given, what will you do? That is unexpected. And that is why you need to watch. The second scenario I want to paint here is that we are all aware now that it is difficult for all of us to travel, especially with all these killings and kidnappings. And now, if you are going to do something, you have not planned, you have not looked, you have not done anything. You just picked your car and as you were going, you had that fool taking hostages somewhere, right? And you are, so you are totally unaware of your surroundings. And so when you walk into maybe an amrobbi situation, it may be due to the fact that your pastor will call it, you are just walking without being aware of your environment. So I'm bringing these two circumstances out of the Bible, because sometimes we, and most of us do that. They don't read the news, they don't hear the news. They just, when you tell them, they actually listen to the, to the, uh, I mean, to the rumors. Nobody does any kind of watching and see whether, all of these things, how it affects our life. And our life, we cannot have, and that's what Elder John said, "I wish that you have your spiritual growth as you are having your physical growth." So if you are not watching, you'll find out that these two things have a way of making you slip into sin or difficulty. Is there any other, except, apart from these two, is there any other way that we are asked to watch? Is anybody coming up with any, any other thing as inspired? Yes, sir?
What is the law?
Hallelujah.
Sir, I was almost about coming to even cite it before you mentioned it, but let me look at it from another angle as the spirit. Presently now, with the state of insecurity in our country, if the church did not watch very well and remain fervent in prayers, those things we condemn as idolatry, there is temptation for Christians to fall back to them. What I'm talking of, charms for protection. Let me speak like a man from Sardin Caduna with the kind of killings we are facing. Personally, even as a minister, there are several times I would be tempted to say, "I wish we still have our forefathers' powers." When a Sardin Caduna man, you dare not face us in Christ, we won't even go out to fight you. We'll just send something to go and deal with you. But the Christianity condemned those things. But with the kind of challenges we are facing now, there is a high temptation for us to remember, "Look, oh, I think we can't be standing here and they will killing us. Let's go back and take our forefathers' shrines." Then the church will fall into idolatry. So we have to watch and pray that we will not be forced to fall back to those things we have condemned, that they are evil, because we are seeking for protection. We have to be, sincerely.
Thank you very much. That is, that is a wonderful contribution. Yes, the church needs to watch and pray. And to add it, add it to that, I saw some people, there was a post, somebody said that when Sunday Boho was bragging about the fact that he was taking a lot of AK-47 from all of those things and pastors and Christians were also clapping for him, what do we think he was using? Was he using God's power? Right, and the question is that, so the world is equally watching us. And if the church is not watching and praying that we will be taken out of these challenging times, we might, out of our human nature, slip into what he has mentioned. And that will be very dangerous for us. Let us quickly go to item two in there. So we now, oh, somebody? Okay. Now let us go to item two. What should Christians watch and pray about? Right, we, we have, we, we have tried answering that in first part, but can we also, let us read, let us establish that in 1 Timothy 4:1-3.
1 Timothy, chapter four, from verse 1 to 3 says, "Now the Spirit speaks expressly that in the latter times some shall depart from the faith, giving heed to seducing spirits and doctrines of the devils, speaking lies in hypocrisy, having their conscience scared with a hot iron." Verse 3, "Forbidding to marry and commanding to abstain from meats, which God had created to receive with thanksgiving of them which we, which believed, which believe and know the truth."
Thank you. Let us go to 2 Timothy. Please put that, that particular passage at the back of your mind as we are looking at what are we to watch and pray against.
2 Timothy, chapter 3, from verse 1 to 5. "This known also that in the last days perilous times shall come; for men shall be lovers of their own selves, converts, converters, boasters, proud blasphemers, disobedience to parents, unthankful, unonly, without natural affection, truth-breakers, false accusers, incontinence, incontinence, fears, despisers of those that are good, traitors, heedy, high-mandate, lovers of pleasures more than lovers of God." Verse 5, "Having a form of godliness, but denying the power thereof from such turn away."
Yes, now that is a very challenging one. Now, we have moved from the general question. We are now speaking particularly as Christians. And if Your Grace will remember, sir, you did me ask a question, sometimes ago, that why were Christians rooting for the Donald Trump? If you remember, sir? And, uh, look at that second passage, which we read. And if Your Grace remembers the, the analogy we gave, you will see pastors and you will see exactly what is happening to Father Mbaka right now, right? There's nothing that is new, like the word says, as it was in the beginning. It is now and may it, maybe forever shall be. But you will see very clearly that there is nothing new. You, you might not want to identify it, but these are things around us. Like, Your Grace asked, why was all the Pentecostals, where were they rooting for Trump? We did our own small Bible study then, and what the Spirit mentioned at that time was that, while the church was sleeping in the comfort of the times we were enjoying, the pastors, maybe from benevolent time, from the times of those powerful preachers, were bringing in a lot of people and they were having more Christians coming into crusades, coming into all kinds of places, to the church. And so, all the GOs, all the head of churches, were becoming powerful. So you'll see that rather than preaching salvation, they moved on into preaching other things like prosperity. And they went to sleep. Why did they sleep? They were still preaching. And that's why Paul said, "They had a form of godliness, but they were very godly." What they were doing was, they were preaching for their own situation. So while they were busy praying, I mean, were busy preaching for their own situation, they found out that the devil quietly came into the church. The devil quietly came around. And in what form did the devil come in? Right, if you are a student of internationalization, you will see that it was not as if the devil came as a fiery furnace or whatever it is, telling them to keep their mouth shut. It has brought out some people. And then you now have the word LGBT, gay, lesbianism, and transgender. And he coined it in such a way that it called it fundamental human rights, that I have the right to do whatever I want with my body. And that became a situation, and what the devil did was to look for one person acceptable and brought that person out, backed that person. So what the pastors were doing, when they saw that they had slept like the five virgins, they were now looking for a political solution to the problem. And so that is why everybody was saying, yes, Donald Trump, because he hated LGBT, let him be there and then he will do something for us. Then we will continue preaching our own prosperity. But the pulpit forgot that the pulpit was meant for salvation, not for prosperity. And that is the same thing that Paul is telling us here, that we should watch and pray so that the Bible, so that we, as a church, do not veer away from our first calling. And let me give you, there's a particular passage that Jesus Christ brought out. He said, "While the owner of the farmyard was sleeping, the enemy came in and planted weeds, and both of them grew." So the church must be aware that we cannot afford to sleep. We cannot continue to run after money and expect that the message of salvation will be preached by somebody else. Any other addition to that, please? As we quickly move to item three. Okay, yes, sir, please come forward. Hallelujah.
Another thing I am looking at is this. The method of prayers these days looks to me as if it doesn't conform with the instructions given by Jesus Christ. If you come to some of these churches these days, somebody will be praying, scattering the whole properties of the church, spoiling some in the name of prayers. Whereas Jesus instructed in Matthew 6:5 and 6, said, "If you want to pray, you should pray quietly, that your Father in heaven, who sees in secret, will see you and understand you and take your prayers and then answer it." But these days now, every prayer, every person will come to the open to, to say a lot of things, trying to convince members of the group that his, his prayers are hard and all this.
It is still part of our lack of watch. The devil has brought so many things to us. Now let us quickly go to item three and four together so that we can conclude. What are the factors preventing Christians from watching and praying? Let us read 1 Corinthians 7:32 quickly.
1 Corinthians 7:32 says, "But I would, but I would have you without carefulness. He that is unmarried, careth for the things that belong to the Lord, how he may please the Lord." 7:35.
Okay, 7:35, go ahead.
"But he that is married, careth for the things that are of the word, but he may please his wife." There, there is difference also between a wife and a virgin. The unmarried woman careth for the things of the Lord, that she may be only both in body and in spirit. But she that is married careth for the things of the word, how she may please her husband."
Okay, let us stop there. Number two, let us go to Matthew 6 to establish what, put it in one word, that is, Matthew 6:25.
Matthew 6:25 says, "Therefore I say unto you, take no torts for your life, what ye shall eat, or what ye shall drink; nor yet for your body, what ye shall put on. Is it not, is not the life more than meats, and the body than, and the body than remnants?"
Thank you very much. The first one we read was Paul admonishing that we are all concerned for all the things of this world. Now, the only, the one word that we want to use there because of time now is, do not be anxious. Do not be anxious about your physical needs, that the Lord you serve knows you are in need of it. And that is one of those anxieties bring you to start running after other things. And then how can Christians overcome the challenges and factors mentioned above? Simple. 1 Peter said it in there, you remove fear by praying. You remove fear by praying. And it's not the kind of prayer that some places that say, I fall down and die, fall down and die. Simple communion with God and total surrender to God makes us come into God's presence. And because of that, God himself takes over all that we need. Any other question, please, as we conclude? It's always a challenge during Bible study time because times are always in a rush. Any question? Anyone coming up with any question or any other suggestion? Yes, please come over quickly.
Your grace and the members of synod, I just want to, while the study was on, look at the issue of watch and watchmen. I want to know whether are we still having watchmen? Who are the watchmen? If we have watchmen, why are things the way they are till now?
Yes, will anybody attempt to answer, who are the watchmen? Whether we still have them? Is anybody coming up with any? Me too, I will try and, and, and ask myself, who are the watchmen? Right, anybody? Can everybody be a watchman? I, I honestly don't think so. You know, in the platoon, let's look at it from this point of view. In the platoon of soldiers, when it is time for them to sleep, right, they will take and that's why the psalmist says, "I wait for your ward like the one who watches over for the night, who waits for the coming of day." So that means there's somebody standing while others are sleeping, who watches over so that there will be no danger. So if you look at it, all of us cannot stay awake, all of us cannot go to sleep. So there will be the need for people who will be interceding for us. And that probably will take from the point of view that there will be people who offer themselves as a service. And that's why the beauty of Paul's letter in 1 Corinthians 12 says that each one of us have been called in the body of Christ to different ministries. It is not everybody that would be an archbishop. It will not be everybody that will be a minister. But there are some people who would probably kneel down and pray for the church all the time. All the time. And in the school of evangelism, there's one particular analogy that I use. The Benihin or one of these very big evangelists went into heaven. They started out from a small village church. And when they were starting their crusade, the man and the woman and old woman there, we will always pray. So when this evangelist got to heaven, St. Peter's was sticking stars and stars and stars and inviting us, "Oh, you are welcome, you've done very well. At the height of your preaching ministry, you spoke to eighty countries at the same time. So you've done well for the Christian world." And so as he sat down and happy that he was on the right side of God, another woman of the same church, the same small village church that they started out, was also coming into heaven. And as she was coming in, St. Peter's was also sticking stars on her head, almost as equal as the number of the evangelists. So the evangelist asked, "Ah, ah, Oga, I have been known all around the world. This woman, I remember we started together, but she is, she never left her village." So St. Peter answered and said, "You know, for every crusade that you had, for every successful prayer you had, this woman was always on her knees, praying for the success of that." So she has every right to have that crown, just like you had. Because if you want to have a crusade and you don't have prayer warriors, if you want to have a successful synod and you don't have people praying that the hand of God will move on behalf of the church, then we, we don't have the watchmen. God will help us in Jesus' name. Let us come to conclusion. Yes, question? We are running out of time, okay, quickly.
Good morning, sir.
Yes.
Somebody came up the other time and said, falling down, falling down is not part of the prayer that Bible is talking about. My question is this. What was the kind of prayer Jesus prayed for his, especially Judas' carryout? The prayer Jesus prayed for Judas' carryout. He said, "One of you will betray me," and what follows? "To him through which the son of man is betrayed." What kind of prayer is that? Falling down prayer? Be wise. Washing and praying, falling down of the evil ones is part prayer. I can say it anywhere.
Okay, just one more contribution and then, yes.
Good morning, sir. My own is not question. Just a comment on what the Reverend Abanwa asked.
Yes, please.
I'm reading from Ezekiel, chapter 3, verse 17.
Yes.
"Son of man, I have made thee a watchman unto the house of Israel. Therefore hear the word of my mouth and give them warning from me."
Yes.
So I turn to verse 20 or 19. "Yet if thou wonst the wicked, and he turn not from his wickedness, nor from his wicked way, he shall die in his uniqueness; but thou hast delivered my soul." So what I want to say there is that, first of all, because he said, are we still having watchmen? That's the question. So I want to say that we are watchmen. Because according to this passage, God is talking to a prophet, which is Ezekiel. So we are also part of this, part of the prophet at this very time. Going through the belief of mental church, the priesthood of believers, we can also say that we are all watchmen. And we are still having them even now. Because I am, I am always interceding for my church, for my members, for my family and every other person that come to me with any prayer request.
Thank you very much. We as all Christians are meant to watch for our God. There is no doubt about it that we are all in the priesthood of all believers. And just like Ezekiel was at that time, he was specially selected out for his beauty. So what we are saying is that while all of us in our communion with God will always lift the church up, will always lift our nation up, there are some people set a path for specific purposes, for a, of warfare. And that is what we are saying. And considering what he said about the prayer thing, right? God answers the Muslims also, or else they will not be praying. They may not be praying through Jesus Christ. But I think, and I want, don't want to subject that to an argument. I think it is your mindset or your state of your mind. Because you might do, I've seen all, like we said, in the case of Donald Trump, there were people who prophesied that he will win, but then God did not speak through them. So you might pray all the powerful prayers, or you might pray the small prayers, and then God will not listen. So what you need to look, whatever form of prayer that is okay for you, whether you are sitting down, you are standing up, you are falling down, just make sure that your mind is with God. There's a communion, or else God will not listen. God is not mocked, and that is the issue. So you cannot mock, God alone will show you to argue, that is the issue. So let us go back to the conclusion as we conclude. It is most, it is a must to do what you can on your path. Watch and pray. Let your prayers be fervent. Let this be the language of your heart. "I will not let thee go unless thou bless me," Genesis 32:26. Have a set time, a special season for prayers, at least three times a day, morning, noon and at night. Daniel prayed to his God, notwithstanding the king's decree and the fearful den of lions. He was not ashamed or afraid to pray, but with his windows opened, he prayed three times a day. Did God forget his faithful servant when he was cast into the lion's den? No, he was with him there all night. He closed the mouth of this hungry lion, and they could not hurt the praying man of God. You will see that in Daniel, chapter 3, 6 and to 28. What about Paul and Silas? They prayed. However, as Christians, we should also watch while praying so that we, so that worldly things will not break our relationship with God. That is very important. Worldly things, because James said, "We pray, but we do not know what to pray for." I'm just paraphrasing that, so that, watch and pray. So let us all take the memory of us together. Watch and pray that you may not enter into temptation. You'll find that in Matthew 26:41. Let us all stand up. Let us all rise on our feet as we. First and foremost, let us first of all, take the apostles' creed and then we'll do a small prayer about what we have done today and that God will interpret his word into our heart. Let us take the apostles' creed together. I believe, I believe in God, the Father almighty, maker of heaven and earth, of Jesus Christ.
And the third day he rose again from the dead. He ascended into heaven and sat on the right hand of the Father almighty. From thence he shall come to judge the quick and the dead. I believe in the Holy Spirit, the Holy Catholic Church, the communion of saints, the forgiveness of sins, the resurrection of the body.
One thing that I want you to pray that God, make me a watchman for my generation. I want you to pray, make me a watchman for my generation. A watchman is somebody who seeks the goodness of the whole people that he belongs to, who seeks that no danger will come, both to the church and to his community. God, make me a watchman. A watchman will need to pray, a watchman need to watch, make me a watchman. As watchmen who live in Nigeria, we are called Nigerians and we live in Lagos state. Let us pray that, yes, your Rebas will say, we are all in a situation that's insecurity and is because they are playing politics with our life. God, take absolute control of this country. Pray that God will take absolute control, that irrespective of whatever the powers that be, principalities and powers in high places, whether they are for our gaze, that God, let your rule be established. In Nigeria, let your rule be established. Because there are too many innocents. And God is saying, "If I see five good people, I will not let that land. And if my people who are called by my name will pray, I will heal their land." Now let us ask that God will heal our land. We have no other country but this country, Nigeria. Let us ask God's intervention as we stand in the gap for our country. Let us pray for Lagos state where we are domiciled, where we live, as God, continue to prosper this, this place. Take away ethnicity from us. Take away the dangers of being overfed and even the challenges of economy away from us. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Our Father and our God, we want to thank you. We know that, Lord, you are the author of life and you are the author of our well-being. Who do we have in heaven but you? And who on earth is our guide but you, our great God? We have lifted up our voices unto you and we know that you are the only one that is the great God I am. We know that in our different ways, we have called upon you. Establish your rule here in this country in Jesus' name. Heavenly Father, we pray that our country will know peace and we, oh Lord, will know so that we'll be able to worship you in truth and in need. Lord, let your need, let your name continually be upon our mouth in the mighty name of Jesus. Father Lord, we put the economy of this country into your hands. Lord, your economy is never in recession. So Father Lord, we pray that you will continue to provide for all our needs according to your riches in Christ Jesus. Father Lord, we pray that as you continually rule over this country, all forces of evil, you will continue to close their mouth like that of the lion in the den in the mighty name of Jesus. And Father, we have prayed for ourselves. And Father, we have prayed for ourselves and we are asking, you will make us watchmen, anointed and called by you, so that when we call upon you, Father, you will answer us. Lord, today, we will be discussing the work that you have placed in our hands in this synod. Be with our bishop. Let your grace be upon his grace, Lord. Father Lord, let the work that you have placed in his hand, Lord, be established, oh Lord. And Father, as we consider these works, Lord, we pray, Lord God Almighty, that you will inspire his thinking, inspire our talking, and at the end, let all glory be ours, because we have prayed in Jesus' mighty name. Please be seated.
Shall we put our hands together for Christ Jesus? Thank you very much. On behalf of his grace, the most reverend Obafemi B. Adeleye, we want to thank our Bible study conductor. You have done justice to the topic given and we pray that God will continue to bless you the more. Special unchained functioning will be your portion in Jesus' name. Thank you very much. On behalf of that bishop, I want to welcome all of us to this beautiful day of beautiful month. And we pray, as we journey on throughout this month, sadness and calamity will not be our friend in Jesus' name.
We want to encourage us to endeavor to keep to the rules and regulations guiding this year proceeding of synod. We will go for breakfast now, after the grace is being pronounced by his grace. We will convene by quarter past ten. Let us quickly go for breakfast and then come back for the main business of this year's synod. Before we hand over the mark to his grace for the grace, we were informed that all quarterly meeting secretary are to see the all quarterly secretary are to see Reverend Atolai. Brother Yomie Oloma. Brother Yomie Oloma. All quarterly secretary, please, can they see Brother Yomie Oloma? It's very, very important. Shall we please be upstanding, please? Today is the first day of the month. Place your right hands on your chairs and prophesy good things in your life. Commence your journey to his care. He will see you through. In Jesus' marvelous name we are praying. Once again, Jehovah God, we are grateful for the beautiful moments we had for you in this Bible study exercise. And we pray for the special grace to put this teaching to practice. Father, grant unto us in the mighty name of Jesus. In our fresh, we commit ourselves unto you. Most importantly, in our journey of this new month. Father, go with us. Throughout the days in this month, there shall be no dull moment. Enemy will never rejoice over us. Our testimony this month shall be unstoppable. Our success this month shall be undeniable. We pray that you order our footsteps, we never journey into crises. And at the close of this month, we pray that our joy shall be unlimited. Thank you, everlasting Father. Blessed be at your holy name. We pray in Jesus' name. Shall we take the grace in unison? The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, and the fellowship of Holy Spirit with us now and evermore. Thank you very much. Let's go for our breakfast quickly.